Yeah.
Colonel, Colonel, Prime Minister, Board of Education, please stand and appoint the lead. Praise allegiance to the fire of the United States of America.
And to the. Freedom, foundation, honor, justice.
Amen.
Call call please.
Charlie Bailey, here. Brian Ham.
Here.
Dan Holloway.
Here.
John Hearn.
Here.
Bruce Whiteford, here. Susan Mormon.
Here.
Mark Kelly.
Here. Form being present in the standing motion.
The agenda to be approved is presented.
Second. All those in favor? Motion to adjourn.
That's right here. Thanks for your.
Be loud. You got it. I'll be loud.
As you prepare for your tax rate hearing, just some general information regarding our current tax rate and assessed valuation numbers. Levee projections are based on a total assessed valuation, which is the sum of the real estate, personal properties. Currently, it equals one hundred and fifty-nine million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. That does include new construction. The levy recommendation for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year is three dollars, three dollars, point five eight four zero, which is a decrease of point two nine four four cents from last year's general levy. That service levy will remain the same at one point one nine two zero two. Total levy will be four dollars, seven, seven cents. So on the general fund reduction from three point eight seven to three point five eight, the reason for that was? So a year ago, there was a court case referred to as the Blankenship case that required the resetting of tax rate ceilings. Carney, as well as, I think about a hundred and eighty-eight school districts fell into that quadrant of school districts that have a reduction. So the fourteen cents of that is due to Blankenship. The remaining is due to your reassessment and Hancock Amendment that requires a rollback of tax rate.
Another question?
I got this one. Move to set the tax levy for operations at three dollars. See, three dollars and fifty-eight and forty-hundred cents and debt service at one dollar and nineteen and two hundred cents for a total levy of four dollars and seventy-seven and forty-two hundred cents. A decrease of twenty-nine and forty-four hundred cents per one hundred of assessed valuation.
Second.
Call call please.
Charlie Bailey, yes. Brian Ham.
Yes.
Dan Holloway.
Yes.
John Hearn.
Yes.
Bruce Whiteford, yes. Susan Mormon.
Yes.
Mark Kelly.
Yes.
We have no public comment tonight. Actually, we have recognition.
Thanks for the opportunity to recognize some of our students and staff. Mitch Mascheron, Principal of Carney Elementary, last year had the opportunity to work with Auntie Carmack and some of her students in her graphic design class. These students took myself as the employer in this sense. Had a request to bring a little flair and update some of the Carney Elementary walls. So I sent them a video of what we were looking for to update our walls a little bit. And Colin Rutter and Rich McBride are two students that are here with us tonight designed a couple of these decals that we got to put up on our walls. It was an awesome experience. It was something that gave us more than we asked for. So I asked for a couple of certain things with the Carney approved logo here, and they just really ran with it. They incorporated some Carney Elementary history to it and gave us a little flair. So I got to look at about fifty designs from her whole class, and these were the designs that were chosen from a lot of them by our staff to put up on our walls. And we really appreciate that flair that it brought to our walls, and it really made a big impact on our building. So Jacob Siglia was the other student that that design got chosen, but really appreciated the work of Mrs. Carmack and Colin Rutter and Rich McBride are here with us tonight.
Yeah. Showed like best thing. You guys think which one?
Yeah, so Colin, I believe, did the purple logo in the front, and then Rich did the purple flag.
Yeah, can we take our mask off and picture?
Actually, I have consented.
Can we talk about what's going on in the consent agenda? The. He's agreeing for the bid also there? Okay, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
The agenda to be approved is presented.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Make sure that information on items, financials. Anybody have any questions?
You get to pass this. You get to pass this one.
Next is action items, approval of vehicle leasing agreement.
Yeah, I think that we have, the man Roberts of Enterprise Leasing on Zoom. This information has been prepared by Doug for us. And as you can see, the facility department is requesting approval of lease and maintenance agreement for their vehicles through enterprise leasing. This would be for all of our facilities, work vehicles, SOR, et cetera. We've received proposals from Midway Four several months ago, but nothing else has been received. So part of the reason for looking at this lease agreement is because over the twelve and a half years that Doug has worked with this, the Missouri State Agency for Surplus Property, Jeff City. We started buying vehicles off of that site, but COVID has changed quite a bit. It certainly decreased the amount of surplus property that is available because now the new environment has changed so much. So we're not getting very reliable regarding that. And they're at an increased cost of the cost ratio of return on investment certainly doesn't. Both well with the district. What we would put into these lease agreements would be the same cost that we have been utilizing and actually a little bit lower. So over time, you're going to continue to see that return on investment growth, both from the reliability of the vehicles, but also from the cost as well. So I know Jeff's been. As well, we've got Aaron on the Zoom. If you have any further questions?
These vehicles fall under harm or faulty for no tobacco, no smoking, or otherwise of the vehicles. And if you just because they're around the public, you know, let the public just warn them that that was the case.
That is the case.
Okay, correct. And everyone in the operations department understands that it's the case.
Does it fees if they're if they're smoking involved, I mean, if they're if they come back and we want to get turned in like damages and that kind of stuff, the smoke is all under the damages?
I don't know.
But they assess the vehicle based on kind of usage in there because they have another testing.
Right.
From.
Is there a mileage checker about, like, they check for mileage?
I think that's a question.
Dan, you have a read on it?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? Is there a mileage restriction or tracker on the vehicles?
Is there a mileage? Did you hear it?
There is not. So we've estimated approximately ten thousand miles per year on these vehicles. But there's no penalty if you go over or under. Resale might be a little bit higher if it's under, and resale might be a little bit lower if you go over. But that felt very good, about ten thousand being pretty conservative. So no, no penalty.
Have any other question? Time to entertain a motion.
Move to approve lease agreement and maintenance agreement with enterprise leasing as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Actually, we have approval of the RFP requested proposal for superintendent search as presented. Do you want no question for the panel?
Move to approve the RFP superintendent search as presented.
All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have approval of strategic focus plan.
Yes. So as the board is where the district has been working on strategic priorities for the district. This allows to focus the work in several areas. And so this will be a team approach. You'll hear from several team members as they describe not only the process of how these were developed, the plan itself, and hopefully what we aspire to be the prospect for this work. So the process, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Duncan.
Each June, the district leadership team, and the leadership team is comprised of central office leadership as well as the building principals. We get together for two days and we reflect on the prior year. But most importantly, we set our goals and talk about what we is important for us as we're moving forward on the next year. This year's, we're setting our goal, we were setting our goals for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We put a very collaborative process together. We wanted to make sure everybody on the district leadership team was heard and part of that decision-making process with the expectation that once we left, we were all on board and moving the same direction.
Good, thank you. So the plan essentially has your vision, your mission, and your values as the things that undergird all of the work that would be taken through this plan. It is separated into student performance, student support, employee focus, governance, and then parent and community partnerships. And so we're going to highlight each area of the plan, and we'll start again with what I talked about on student performance.
Okay, so often we think of student performance as assessment results, but we know that there's so much more to that as we are preparing kids for life, not just high stakes tests. One process that a lot of districts have gone through is called Portrait of a Graduate. Portrait of a Graduate represents the school district's vision for what they feel the competencies are for our students and what they need to succeed, whether they go onto college, onto the workforce, or life in general. In the coming months, we're going to be surveying students, parents, and the staff to get their input on what they feel these key competencies should be. We'll analyze the data and determine what Carney's vision is for all students who graduate. In the end, we'll have a one-page representation that shows what these key competencies are. So another important thing that we're working on is proficiency scales for our elementary students. They're going to be developed, and those will be used in conjunction with our standards-based grading system. Using the proficiency scales, it's a system used by teachers to determine the student's current level of progress toward meeting specific standards. They determine what skills are necessary as they go through the process of becoming, of gaining mastery in the, with the standard. And then the third one that we have highlighted is creating pathway systems. These pathways are going to be based off Desi's career cluster. Each pathway will have a list of recommended classes that students will need to take in order to be best prepared for that field upon graduation. An example of that would be, we would have a healthcare pathway, and students would be given a list of recommended classes which they would take to prepare them for a career in the medical field. And that's whether they plan on going on to college or straight into the workforce. In addition, the pathway system would recommend different clubs and activities which would benefit students in that specific field. Other pathways will have will be engineering, business and technology, we'll have agriculture, we'll have broadcasting journalism, as well as others.
Another pillar of this work is student support. So Jennifer will continue to tell us a little bit about that.
Okay, as everyone, I'm sure, has heard as well, where social, emotional issues are on the rise with our students, and it's very important that we have support in place for them. We have a multi-tiered system of support for social, emotional learning. Eighty percent of our students, their needs are met at that tier one level, and that is in the classroom and with the school counselor lessons. If a student needs more support, then they would move on to tier two. Approximately fifteen percent of our students move to tier two for additional supports. Those might be small groups, it might be the development of a behavior plan, or a multitude of other supports. Five percent of our students are served through tier one, which means it could be a referral to a behavior interventionist or individual counseling. And those are generally provided through our outside providers, which is funded by the Clay County Children's Fund. We recently created a new, more streamlined system for therapy referrals and behavior intervention referrals. This new system, we believe, will allow those that need the services to get quicker access.
Good. Employee focus will also be an important part of this work, so.
So starting back in two thousand and eleven, when we passed the last levy, obviously a lot of things with programming, it's sort of thing, it's going to keep being a continuing of staff. So at that time, we started a peer district study. We had peer districts that we compared to academically. So then we took that and compared also from a salary standpoint. So traditionally, Carney has a school district with teachers that between seventy-five to eighty percent of them have at least one advanced degree, so they either have one master's degree or multiple master's degrees or specialties. In addition, in addition to that, we have staff who range that fifteen-plus years of experience. So when we look at our peer districts, we are, as far as our basic grade, we are in the top third of there with years of experience, but also in that top third. When we look at from the salary standpoint, we fall to the bottom third. We want to, we want, when we recruit a teacher, we want to, we spend time training them, we want to retain them. It's good for, not only for the staff, but also for our students. That's the most important thing, is our students, that they have a quality teacher and an experienced teacher in there. And so when looking at that, the goal as we started, and when we started this process in two thousand and eleven, we compared, we were on our lower third, in other words, we were ninth, tenth, or eleventh, or even sometimes twelfth school in those positions. So we've gone over the years and salary base divided teachers, classified staff, administrator. So we talked about all those, those individual components you guys get as a board. Usually, April, we run through the peer district study. Our goal was, we know we can't jump from the bottom all the way to the top. So we are academically, we're at the top of our peer district. And so we want to kind of match that and keep those teaching for the producing and helping our students attain at that high level. And so we would like to close that gap. So, but you can't jump from twelve to one. What you can do is start to make progress in there because other districts are making progress as well in our salary schedules. So we want to get at least into the middle third and then try to continue to jump up. The board asked a couple of years ago, what would it take if we were to say money dollars percentage-wise to get from that bottom third to at least number four in the top middle, top third? So we kind of tried to give those numbers, not as a sticker shot, but just saying, here's where we're at with our salaries and knowing that, yeah. We know that that's a big part of our budget, but it's also money will spend because it produces quality results for our students.
So parenting community partnerships is also a critical component to this, and so the light will kind of speak up to that.
If you can afford attention for the opportunity to share certain information about this strategic focus point. So it goes without saying that every single thing we do in the district involves our stakeholders and has to be, has to involve the process of engaging with, including the developing work we're doing with, with our stakeholders as partnered with us in that process. The other thing about that, when I came to the district in late March, one of the things I said to the folks that I was working with was, you know, we do a great job of sharing the good news about a lot of things we do for career and athletics, but the best kept secret in Carney is the high quality of our schools academically. The reality is, we have some of the best academically, we have some of the best schools in not just the metro, but the state, and I would argue the nation. And we've got some of the best teachers in the state and nation. And I don't think we do a very good job of sharing that news. So it's a part of my job coming in here is to make sure that folks are aware of the fact that we have amazing classrooms, amazing people in our classrooms, amazing students, amazing teachers doing amazing work every single day. So my mission statement is really to be, you know, student faces student voice. People are going to get sick of me hearing that. It's sick of hearing me say that. That students are going to be the focus of our attention, and then teachers right, right there with that. So now as part of that, we need to be making very smart decisions about how we're going to expand and improve our platforms for engagement. Some of that work's already begun. We're making improvements to our website that I think are enhancing the information that's available, how, what information's available, access to it makes it more attractive, those are all important things. We're going to continue to think those requirements. We have developed a monthly newsletter for you all, for the work you do, that I think will convey the scope and depth of the work you do virtually every day. I think it's important that people understand the work you guys are doing. I'll be developing a district newsletter. We're in the process of redesigning our quarterly magazine. People will see that new redesigned magazine in their October, in their, in their mailboxes. One of my jobs is going to be to make sure, make sure that we are equipping our team to also be able to tell our story. So I see part of my role is to develop those resources and those training, and that training to be able to make sure that our school leaders, our staff are also able to tell those stories effectively and efficiently, and also have that to be able to engage with our stakeholders. And then on a very practical level, one of the things I'm doing, and we saw a student recognition just now, is to be able to open that process up and really systematize it for the community so that we'll create a form, an online form that folks will have access to, be able to say, hey, this, this kid's doing great work in this regard, and we'd like you guys to recognize them, and make sure that's something that is very readily assessed. Another big part of the job that we have to do is ensure that every stakeholder is aware of and understands and can engage with our major initiatives. So this is going to include our diversity, equity, inclusion process, our real-world learning initiative, and our long-range facility planning process. So again, that's going to be a big lift here in the next couple of months is really making sure that we're taking that information out in a way that's both comprehensive but also comprehensible for our stakeholders. Now, all of this work is important, and so the way we're going to do that is we're not just going to do this by hit or miss. We're actually going to have a plan. So just like when our football team gets on the field on Friday, they have a plan, it's a game plan, we're going to have a strategic implementation plan that's going to thrive everything we do. That's going to be a big part of my job in the next, in the next few weeks. This plan is going to be developed through the RPI process. It's a little bit industry insider stuff here, but I think it's important for you to understand that it's very systematic. So R stands for research, so this is really where we do like SWOT analysis, stakeholder research, that kind of thing. That's really the preparation, if you're thinking about a club company, that's where you're prepping the ingredients, right? And then we're going to go into the actual planning, so this is going to be SMART goals that are going to be really built around the strategic focus points that you're learning about tonight. So in that way, my job is easy because we've got the strategic focus point. So I can take that and build that directly into my strategic communication plan, and that will thrive those SMART goals. And then we're going to talk, and then that's also where some, develop some of those strategies that I'm using. That's moving to the information implementation side, which really includes key messages, and then the tactics, which are really the nuts and bolts. And then last one, I'll leave is the E in our RPI, which stands for really evaluation. So that's when we monitor our results, and then it feeds back into us so we can prove it and complete better in the next slide. That is where that is.
Thank you, sir. Governance is also the last pillar here. Three items that we highlighted this evening, one of those is the Week Fifty Academy. We'll describe that.
Yeah, next week, we're going to be opening up the application process for the Carney Leadership Academy. And this is a program for teachers who might think they may have an interest in administration. So this would be an eighteen-month program. They would learn things about school policy and school law, school finance, things that they typically do not have the opportunity to learn when they're in the classroom. They would also have the opportunity to shadow both building administrators as well as central office administrators and kind of decide if this is something that they're really interested in. We know there are several districts around that have this type of a program. And quite honestly, when we get applicants from some of these other districts, they, they know some things that our teachers that are wanting to get into administration, they just haven't learned those things. So we want to give our teachers that opportunity if that's something that they have in their future.
The second bullet is highlighted as part of the Missouri requirements for board of education members, also through except six, Missouri School Improvement Program, and its ongoing board training, which all of you have done for a number of years. But also an annual work session as well, that allows for this process to commence and to take a look at its revisions and any necessary adjustments for the following year. Finally, the district is entered into a long-range facility planning process. Not only here, the possibility of having a bond issue in April twenty twenty-two in order to accommodate improved maintenance and other upgrades that are discussed in that process. So we hope it all ends up with the prospect of certainly improvement for students, both in a well-rounded way, but also in a very focused way. This will help us identify the work, focus it. You will see various reports of progress so that you can monitor that progress along with us. You will see various reports of progress so that you can monitor that progress along with us, but also guide them directly as well. We'll see, see those in subsequent board meetings as the work unfolds. Questions?
Yeah, one concern. So everything on here has planned as a, as a mission statement. And the one thing that, and I said shame on me, you know, three, three meetings ago, and I won't do it anymore, which is the DEI committee task force, which is both of the students and then also in the partner community, it still doesn't have a mission statement. So as a board member, it's really hard, and I'm just saying, I mean, I'm not going to spin it away, but it's hard for me to vote for something when it doesn't have a mission and I don't know what it's going goal is. And I think that that's something that if we're going to put this on here, I just want to state for the record that we need to work towards.
That a meeting? So we've got one.
We do, I want to read it word for word.
It's just like the prospect of the long term range growth, right? You know, when we talked about the, we've got a plan. And that's what I'm after. But it's not on, it's not on this. That's why I've got a concern.
Yeah, we had me last Thursday, we did all this work.
And we actually are, my administrative assistant, Penny and Ryan are working on a website now so we can get all of everything that we work on in the DEI committee so we can get it out there on the website so everybody knows what it is.
Yeah, go ahead and read it.
The mission statement of the DEI task force is the Carney School District will foster an environment of empowerment, empathy and inclusion to help all K S B students, staff and families feel valued.
We'll certainly provide that to you in the board update this weekend. An update on that work.
Questions, Kevin? Not entertain a motion.
But you don't have it?
No.
I moved to approve a strategic focus plan, sorry, for the 202122 school year as presented.
All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Folks, I appreciate you. Almost everybody is wearing the mask. I see four right now who are not wearing them properly. Police officers are still here. I don't want to have to do this. Don't, don't disrupt the meeting. Pull your mask up. Refusing?
Me?
No.
Mom.
Young lady. There you go. Thank you. Sorry, can you say something?
To get some socks. Put socks under the seat. None of this matters. We're all taking our masks off.
Let's continue with our meeting with the kids, please.
Actually, we have, Dr. Shabro calls.
Please don't address me like that again.
These policies have been presented to you last month in their first reading. They are here now for second reading as you're considering. Who did policies on second reading as presented?
All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
We also have two policies that we bring to you on the first reading. Again, there'll be 30 days and they will be back before you for your consideration in October.
Are these in reference to the ISMMSBA?
Hold on.
And then I pick it up.
We don't have over, no, our hats before that.
In response to your question.
Ask for more time to put on socks.
This one is in, these two are in relation to OCA, which is the Missouri. The personal money program of the students and revision success for updates that are required.
Okay. Thank you.
Move to approve policy I G C D and I G C D A on first reading as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The budget amendment.
We have a budget amendment. You see the information there. Ginger is here with any questions you might ask. That's why I couldn't give her, you know, any hard time.
Do you want to have questions?
No.
Not entertain a motion.
Move to approve the budget and then as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, part time waiver.
Dr. Pop?
This is something we did last year.
Yes.
Yes.
And really, I mean, it's, the situation is really the same. We saw a kid who had a lot of anxiety. Last year, we approved to let those kids, if they graduate at semester, not to force them to go all year long. And we would like to continue this.
Seven questions. How many students do we have that fit into this mission?
Less than five.
Right. Right, I thought that was the case last year. I'm curious.
Yes, it's the same. Very normal.
Move to approve extension for a waiver, the policy IKF for the 202122 school year.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Resolution bond two.
So last month, you heard from Todd Coffee, who said you have preliminary information regarding this and how it affects your debt service. Give it back before you now, because we have all of the information computed. And we ask you to take a look at this resolution. This will in fact defeat two series, 2009A and 2012. And the net effect of that also is a benefit to taxpayers because you're no longer paying that interest out in those years. So it's, it's great opportunity for the district, but also the taxpayer as well.
We're just paying off our debt faster, like what Todd said last month. So we're actually, it's an advantage for us as far as.
Interest rates, we're paying interest on that, it's not just paying the debt. Higher interest rate, which is a greater.
Move to approve the resolution of bond series two zero zero nine A and two zero less two redemption as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Or comment? Then. Important dates. Our next long range facility planning committee meeting is Tuesday, September 28th. Homecoming, half day of school on October 8th. Our next board meeting is October 20th and October 22nd at the end of first quarter. Intertain a motion.
Actually, propose sessions, we need to pursue the regular meeting in October, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under section 610-021 of Missouri sunshine law.
Well, please.
Marlene Bailey.
Yes.
Brian Ham.
Yes.
Dan Hallway.
Yes.
John Kern.
Yes.
Bruce Switzer.
Yes.
Susan Norman.
Yes.
Mark Kelly.
Yes.